Welcome everyone to the joint meeting of the Transportation Commission and the Transportation Policy and Planning Board for March 24, 2021. TC Chair Kovac, if you'd like to begin.
Thanks, Tom. I'd like to call the Transportation Commission meeting to order for March 24, 2021. Patrick, if you would call and roll, please.
Nasroehalye. I see her. She's just muted.
Here.
Grant Foster.
Here.
Chris McAhill. I saw him earlier, too.
Yeah, he's here.
Just, okay. Well, I'll come back to him then. Ann Kovac.
Here.
And he's just.
Here.
Bill Bremer.
Here.
I don't see Ken, don't see Bridget. I don't see Ken, I don't see Bridget, and then Harald Kleins.
Here.
And I'm just gonna recall Chris. Okay?
Uh, here. Here. Am I freezing up at all?
Yeah, well, I don't know if you're freezing up, but you were muted or something, so I couldn't hear anything earlier.
I did see a little bit of skip in your, in your, in your, in your video, Chris, so.
Okay. Well, um, so all but Ken and Bridget are in for the TC right now.
Okay, thanks very much, Tom.
There's Ken. Ken Straight.
Oh. He might not be able to hear you yet.
Yeah. Ken?
Here.
All right.
Go ahead, Tom.
All right, thank you, Chair Kovac. I will call the Transportation Policy and Planning Board to order. Patrick, if you please call the role for that body as well.
Grant Foster.
Here.
Keith Furman.
Present.
Rebecca Campbell.
Here.
Okay, um, Eric Sundquist? Nope, not yet. Randy Udell is in excused absence. Chris McAhill.
Here.
Tom Wilson.
Here.
And I've been told Balthazar de Andes Santana is also in excused absence. Margaret Bergamini.
Here.
And Bobby Lanquella.
Here.
Okay. Then that appears to be everybody for the TPPB.
Thank you, Patrick. Do we have any public comments for items not on the agenda?
No.
Thank you. Are there any communications, disclosures, or recusals from members of the board or the committee or commission, sorry? Please use the hand raised feature. Seeing none? Our first item is Legistar 64722, update on action items from previous joint meetings.
Thanks, Tom. Um, there were two documents saved in Legistar, which were the action items for the last two joint meetings that we've had, and we're actually going to get updates on many of the topics this evening, so I won't comment on those. The only two that we vote are follow-up on equity, diversity, and inclusion, and we've been working with Tom Lin, Yang, and others on that, and there was a written update there, but with the backlog in the industry on these types of activities, it'll likely be summertime before, at the earliest, before we'll be moving forward, but TC's offered to take the lead and TPPB members will be invited to attend if they wish. And the other is prioritization of the Capitol Streets projects. There was an initial discussion at the Transportation Policy and Planning Board on February 15th. TC members are invited to review that discussion, and future discussions will also occur at the TPPB meetings, and TC members will be kept up to date. Either they can watch, participate, or we'll just keep everybody informed. So that's all I have, Tom, unless anybody has any questions.
All right, any questions for Chair Kovac on action items from the previous joint meeting? Seeing none, our next item is Legistar 64723, proposed amendments to MGO Section 33.56, Transportation Commission. I believe Attorney Strange was going to handle this item, but he had to step away momentarily. Go ahead, Chair Kovac.
I, I wonder if I could, oh, John's back. I was gonna suggest that we wait until he come back, but it looks like he's back, so, great.
I'm here, although I'm not sure I was expecting to handle the item as much as answer questions you might have about it, so I, I can certainly answer any questions you have, but I don't, I don't really have a presentation of any kind.
All right. Thank you, Attorney Strange. Alder Foster, go ahead.
Yeah, I was, I was prepared to give a summary, and as John said, I think he's available to help fill in some gaps and be available, but if I can key things up.
Yeah, please go ahead.
All right. Um, so, so this is really an effort that I, I started probably a year ago, maybe, oh, actually, maybe more than that, pre-COVID, and stalled out quite a bit, I think, throughout COVID where our attentions were in other places, but have made some progress on it, and so wanted to just provide that update to everybody here and get some feedback. So, you know, essentially, this is, this started from a recognition that there is, there've been a number of issues that have come up related to Transportation Commission where there's not a ton of clarity in a couple places in terms of the role of the Transportation Commission as it relates to the Transportation Policy and Planning Board. There've been a lot of kind of internal discussions about where things should be referred, which things should go to TC versus TPPB. I think there's been questions from a staff perspective about what are the, what things should be reviewed by the Transportation Commission, what things should be handled at a staff level. I think we've, we've actually, a lot of things have kind of evolved on their own, and we've found some really good grooves in terms of current practice with some of these different issues, but there sort of remains, I think, a level of uncertainty that I, I think we could improve upon with a potential change to the current ordinance. So that was sort of the impetus for me looking into this and starting some conversations. I think in looking at the current ordinance, it was constructed in a way, and this is maybe somewhere where Attorney Strange could help fill in, but this was one of the products of the Transportation Ordinance Review Committee and their work to really streamline and realign the existing transportation bodies and create what we have today between the TPPB and the TC. And as part of that effort, there was sort of this clear, or desired clear distinction between policy and planning work on the one hand, and then sort of implementation on the other. And I think one of the, one of the anticipated issues with that distinction back during the Tork process was that Transportation Commission might kind of start venturing into policymaking territory, and so as one of the ways to try and protect against that, the Transportation Commission ordinance was written in a sort of quite prescribed way, saying here are the, here are the nine, you know, areas of responsibility for the Transportation Commission. Many of those, I think, have, have pretty much covered the needs, particularly for the, as it relates to parking issues and as it relates to metro issues. I think there's like one area that kind of came up related to metro that we worked with and defined kind of what the, what the right role of the Transportation Commission is, but I say broadly, I don't think we've really seen many issues there in the realm of what was formerly sort of pet bike motor vehicle issues. It's sort of a much broader range of issues. And one of, one of the, the areas of focus for Transportation Commission is item number nine, which is other items referred by the Common Council, TPPB, or Director of Transportation. And so what has sort of ended up happening is there, there, there have been a number of other items that don't fit neatly within the, the items that are outlined in the ordinance, and waiting until they come up in front of the Common Council and then referring them back to the Transportation Commission hasn't really been in anyone's favor. And so that's part of this sort of lack of clarity that I've described. So in approaching, you know, what could we do different in some conversations with, with John, my thought was, well, maybe we should sort of flip this on its head and instead of saying, these are the nine things the Transportation Commission should do, rather, it should be kind of a broader responsibility around transportation-related issues and implementation issues and ensuring that our policies are being implemented. When I raised this as sort of a different framework to look at a new version of the ordinance, I think it raised a lot of questions from, especially from staff, about, well, what would the limits of that be? Would we talking, would we be saying like every single little thing would have to go to the Transportation Commission? Because that doesn't feel right. And so I started work particularly with traffic engineering, because that's where a lot of the, the kind of the questions came up, and we actually were able to look through traffic engineering, kind of came up with a really long list of here are all the different things that TE does today, and they sort of, you know, put down, here's what we think staff should be able to just continue to do on their own, here are the things that we think Transportation Commission should weigh in on. And we had one initial meeting, I think it was back in the fall, and I would say from, from my perspective, what, what they suggested was almost completely in alignment with what I was thinking as well, which I thought was a really good, good sign. It was, you know, really one item out of 30 or something where we maybe had a different perspective, and even on that item, you know, I felt like I'm okay leaving that sort of at a staff discretion level, and staff would bring those, you know, sort of as needed to the, to the TC, and I see Yang just turned his video on so he can chime in on this as well. So I think we made a lot of progress there. Similar work started related to Engineering Division, so related to road construction projects, and Chris Pedakowski started an initial draft of, of starting to define, you know, what are the kinds of road projects that should go to Transportation Commission, at what stage should they go to Transportation Commission, for things that are approved there, what level of changes can be, can happen kind of at a staff level versus needing to come back for reapproval. So that work has started, but, but needs to sort of be completed, so that's on the list of, of items to still look at. And then I think the, the third kind of broad area that I've been looking at with the ordinance is, is how the Transportation Commission interfaces with other boards, committees, and commissions, and where the overlaps are. So I mentioned already a goal of better differentiating the, the kind of roles and responsibilities of Transportation Commission versus the Transportation Policy and Planning Board. This has been, you know, over the last year, a year and a half, in conversations with, with staff, with, including the John and others, you know, when items come up at the Common Council, should this be referred to TC or to TPPB, with, with a goal of not just referring stuff to both, because that was one of the things that I've really tried to make sure we're not just duplicating efforts and having everything going to both bodies, but really trying to steer things in the right direction. And I think we've, we've, at least those of us that have been sort of having these conversations have started to gel on some broad categories of kind of what makes sense, but there's still some, some real question marks out there, things like budget amendments. Like on the one hand, you know, the, the Policy and Planning Board clearly has a role in, in budgetary terms, and a budget is a, is a policy document. On the other hand, a lot of the amendments are sort of more implementation focused and probably make more sense for a body like the Transportation Commission to review. So there's, there's still some unanswered questions there, but that's one area that we're also wanting to try and, and more clearly define. I think another area is between the Transportation Commission and the Board of Public Works. This is one that I think is probably really important for us to, to better resolve. Today, the Transportation Commission ordinance says that the Transportation Commission will recommend geometry to the Board of Public Works, and, and Board of Public Works is responsible for the overall approval of a project. We've seen for a, a few different projects, particularly those where maybe members of the public have different opinions, they'll come to Transportation Commission, will have, you know, often a pretty lengthy and, and really good debate, there's a, a decision made at Transportation Commission, and then theoretically, that geometry decision is still, at that point, is a recommendation, goes to Board of Public Works, and then public often feel like, okay, well, now do we need to go back to the Board of Public Works and have this same discussion and debate around whether there should be, you know, sidewalks or not, or whether there should be bike lanes or not. I have attended a couple of those sessions at Board of Public Works, and I think thankfully, we haven't seen a situation where Board of Public Works is sort of overruling what Transportation Commission recommended, but I, I see it as a real potential area of conflict, and so I think it's something that we need to better resolve. So that's another area that I, I think, I don't have a clear answer at this point, but it's an area that, that I think we'd all benefit from better definition. So those are kind of, in my brushers, those are the sort of different areas and the kind of issues that I've been working on, albeit very slowly, over the last year plus. I brought Ann Kovac as Chair of TC into that conversation just in the last month or so, getting some of her thoughts on it, and so I wanted to share that out with everybody, and, and I guess my questions are a few different things. One, any feedback on anything that I've mentioned or anything that I'm missing or that should be, you know, brought into the discussion would be great. Number two, are there any, are there others that are interested in participating in this work? And then number three, if so, is it something that I should continue to kind of work on, you know, on my own in collaboration with somebody here or there and with staff, or is this something that we'd like to have sort of a more formal group tasked with reviewing and proposing any changes? So looking for feedback on those, on those three things. Any, any specific feedback, anybody that has interest in participating more in this effort, and if so, should we, is there interest for it to be more formalized, or should I continue as is?
Thank you, Alder Foster. Ann Kovac, please go ahead.
Thanks. Grant, one other thing that we talked about was the role that TC should play with regard to transportation pathways that go through parks, and to try and differentiate that relationship as well. But I am very interested in, in continuing to work on this particular project with you, so I'm happy to work on it with you, and if people are, you know, interested, we could work on it on the side if anybody else is interested in working on it with us, that would certainly be great, and then bring it back to both bodies for, for feedback before we go formal with it. So those, those would be my thoughts, but I, I agree that, you know, the more that I've looked at it, the more that I think that there are areas where we can make improvements to the ordinance, which will help clarify the roles and, and make it easier to facilitate the process without having to get to the Common Council and then have it be derailed and, you know, have the, the, the timing delayed.
Thanks, Ann. Bridget, go ahead.
Yeah, and I think it's just, I can probably defer to, to Yang or, or Attorney Strange to speak first, but I'm just wondering if, if there's any sort of a thought on a timeline for this. I mean, I'm assuming, you know, we'd have to go through a process and, and introduce proposals, one meeting and then vote on it in the next meeting, but it sounds like even though Grant has done a lot of work on this, maybe that's a ways off yet. Is that, is that what I'm understanding?
I, I guess if I could just answer, yeah, I mean, I think there's definitely a fair amount of work that needs to happen yet, so I mean, I, I can't imagine us getting there within, you know, sooner than six to eight, 10 weeks, something like that, I think, would be perhaps within range. And then, yeah, I think because these are ordinances, I think what I'm imagining it is I'd like to bring something back sort of informally to both bodies for, for feedback potentially, you know, then sort of update whatever the draft is, and then it would need to be introduced formally at the Common Council and referred back through both bodies for sort of more formal review and impact, uh, input before any changes could be considered for adoption at the council.
Okay.
Thank you, Bridget. Thank you, Alder Foster. Uh, Yang, go ahead.
Okay, thank you, Chair. So I just want to say that Alder Foster provided a really good summary, you know, on the work for the past, you know, year also, and I thank you, Alder Foster, for taking the lead on that. It has been a lot of work. I just want to add that, you know, we also discussed one idea. I think Alder Campbell or Alder Foster first brought those up. The idea is that, you know, in addition to looking at, looking to ordinance change, or instead of ordinance change, you know, we can work on our internal policy in the agency on, you know, how to clearly define, you know, different tasks, where we should, you know, who the responsibility is. So I've been working on that as well. So also to kind of answer Bridget's question about the, you know, our thoughts on timing, I agree with Alder Foster that it would probably take some time still. But, you know, I, I, as Alder Foster mentioned, that, you know, I think we agreed on, you know, quite a few things, right? For example, for traffic engineering, the vast majority of the tax should still, you know, stay with the staff's administrative decision, but a few things that we would like to maybe promote to TC. And I think we agreed on that, and I don't think we need to wait for the ordinance change finally to be changed, or a policy adopted to do that. Actually, we already started, started implementing some of that, for example, you know, bringing a list of, you know, critical signing changes in the city, you know, last year to Transportation Commission for, for a review. So we did that already, and we'll continue to do, do things that, like that. Thank you.
Thanks, Yang. Alder Waelie, go ahead.
Thank you, Chair. I, I would like to work with Alder Foster in term of defining the role and the responsibility, so I'd like to be a part of that. Thank you, Alder.
Thank you, Alder Waelie. Attorney Strange, go ahead.
I was just gonna say that as staff that worked on the, the Tork to rewrite the transportation ordinances, in this concept of having a, a policy body and an implementation body, I think everybody who worked on that, all the alders and everything, knew that, you know, going into it, we didn't and couldn't say exactly what the difference was between policy and implementation in every case, and that we would probably learn as, as the ordinances lived and breathed through real time, what that meant, and, and I think everybody sort of always imagined that at some point, one, two years down the road, there would be a bit of a cleanup slash clarification ordinance that would come, come through. And, and now that this has gone through for two, couple of years, I'm particularly interested in your conversation about, well, you've done that for two years, what is policy and what is implementation, and what kinds of things could clarify to make the, the ordinances work, work even better. So I'm curious in particular about your, your discussion on that issue, whether it happens tonight or in the next eight to 10 weeks.
Thank you, Attorney Strange. Alder Foster, go ahead.
Thank you, and thanks for volunteering, Alder Waelie. We'll, we'll loop you in on this. And to John's point, I think, one, so yeah, at a future discussion, I can kind of talk more through, I think, how we've started to, to best separate these two things conceptually. I think it's also worth pointing out that there are definitely a number of issues that you really, it's sort of impossible to separate, and one of the things that Ann and I just talked about recently actually was, and it's come up previously related to, to specific issues, but the concept of perhaps having an, almost an open invitation for, let's say, members of the Transportation Commission to attend a TPPB meeting for any, you know, for any given items that might have that really strong overlap. So I think some of the real obvious examples are things like the BRT routing, or, or even the metro analysis, where these are, on the one hand, they're sort of, you know, kind of big policy decisions, as they're like a, a large overarching plan. On the other hand, they're also very specific, like they, they equate to changes in our bus network, which is generally the purview of the commission. So perhaps for items like that, even taking a cue from our current ordinances that allow alders to attend and participate in, you know, other bodies that they're not necessarily a member of, that perhaps we could consider writing something like that in, where TC members could, could attend a TPP meeting, and you don't have to do anything special that would allow them to, to participate in the conversation. So that was sort of one idea that came up to try and acknowledge this overlap, that we're probably not going to be able to, you know, have a clear separation always. The other thing I just wanted to highlight was what Yang mentioned, and it was really, I think, a really key of what will likely be proposed, is the creation of some associated policies. So I, I think fundamentally still, the, the ordinance will need to be amended to some degree, but I think what came out of a lot of those discussions is we don't really want to, you know, particularly if we want to get away from very specific things in the ordinance, which I think for a number of reasons makes sense, we don't want to have to go and amend the ordinance every time there's some, some little change. You know, I think of the, the little delivery bots that, you know, are now like delivering packages. Well, that was never imagined as part of the conversation, so it's not an actual item in the TC purview, but everybody agreed that that's something the TC should do. We don't want to have to rewrite the ordinance to include delivery bots as one of the, the, the things that TC will deal with. So I think the concept at this point, the working kind of concept, is that we would have sort of this broader policy, I mean, excuse me, broader ordinance with sort of broad responsibility, and then reference some policy documents that we can review and update much more easily through a, you know, through a review process that has the level of specificity that's really going to be helpful, particularly for staff, because that's something that I think we heard really, I heard very clearly, is it's really, really helpful and important for staff to have clarity around, is this something I need to take to the commission or not? And so I think ultimately, we want that level of clarity at a very detailed level, but it probably doesn't belong in the ordinance. So I appreciate Yang bringing that up. I think that's, that's kind of the, one of the key strategies of how we're thinking about this moving forward.
Thank you, Alder Foster. Margaret, go ahead.
Yeah, um, under this, speaking to the issue of attending one another's meetings and having a seat at the table for discussions, I would want to see some clarification on whether that would also entail voting rights. Although oftentimes, we pass things on both committees with unanimity, but it's not always the case. And if there were voting rights, then what does that do to quorum?
If you just respond real quickly, at, at this point, the idea is that it would not include voting rights. It would really just be a participate in discussion role.
All right, thank you, Margaret. Thank you, Alder Foster. Chris, go ahead.
Thanks. I'll just say this sounds great. It's necessary, so I'm glad you're taking the lead on this. I don't think I can offer to help much in too much capacity, but I'm glad it's happening. And actually, Alder Foster, you already answered the question that I was going to ask, which was this notion of does everything have to live in ordinance, or is there a, a logical structure for the ordinance referencing a document that lives somewhere else? I think that's probably a good idea, especially if folks are open to the idea of everything not being laid out in ordinance. So I guess I just will voice my, my approval of that idea, and I think that's all I have for now.
Thank you, Chris. Ann, go ahead.
Yeah, thanks. I just wanted to clarify that as we were talking about being able to participate in meetings, we were talking about both ways. So TC members could participate in a TPPB meeting, and TPPB members could participate in a TC meeting, and the language And the language we were considering was similar to what, um, members of the common council can do. And, and that would be, uh, permit any member to take part in its deliberations and to speak on any agenda item. However, um, if they're not a member of that body, they shall not vote and shall not be counted in determining whether or not there's a forum. So trying to address those concerns that everybody's been talking about. The idea was just instead of the body having to make a motion and say, okay, we see TC members are here, you're at the TPPB, the, at the Ozzy Board meeting, you know, you have to make, you know, you have to suspend the rules and say it's okay for them to participate or vice versa. So we're just trying to pave the way for more efficiency. So if it's on, uh, one agenda, the other folks are welcome to come and participate in the discussion, um, rather than having it on, on two different agendas. Um, certainly being mindful of who should be actually approving it. So it might land on that agenda. Uh, but it was just something that Grant and I talked about recently, and I think, I really think it has a lot of merit. Thanks.
Thanks, Ian. Harold, go ahead.
Yeah, thanks. I just have a clarification question for the way this is framed on the agenda and how we have talked about it. It seems to be focused on the part of the ordinances that deals with the Transportation Commission. But I mean, I think the way you have framed this, Alder Foster, is like, I mean, are we also considering changing the section that defines the powers of the Transportation Policy and Planning Board? What does it eventually also entail changing, as you have mentioned, the Board of Public Works? So I'm just trying to figure out, I guess we're starting from the section that deals with the TC and then take it from there if that necessitates any other changes? Or are we starting out from like, well, they're all kind of tangled with each other and therefore we need to consider them as a whole?
Yeah, I would say it's the, um, the, the first thing you suggested. So the focus is really around updating the Transportation Commission ordinance. But absolutely, there's a good chance that it would require or benefit from some tweaks and updates in some associated ordinances. So there's certain, you know, sort of keeping a list of those things. And so it's, it seems likely that the, the way it would be, um, prepared would be a, a, um, a suite of ordinance changes that are all, again, all focused around primarily the changes to TC, but they could impact some of the other ordinances.
Thank you. That makes sense.
Thank you, Harold. Thank you, Alder Foster. Uh, additional questions or comments for this item? Right, um, Alder Foster, any closing comments?
No, this is good discussion. If anybody has any thoughts sent in my way, and I will check with Attorney Strange. I'm thinking that with the, with three of us, we can kind of continue to work informally, but I'll, I'll double check with him about that and, or if we need to do something more formally. And if anybody does want to participate in the future, I'm thinking that probably would require, um, sort of certainly a move to something more formal. So just, um, but, but we'd love to have you. So, um, if you are interested, just let me know.
Thanks, Alder Foster. Um, Attorney Strange, any, any thoughts or comments before we move on?
Uh, no.
All right. Thank you. All right. Then we'll move on to our, um, our next item. Hold on, I'm just going to check here to make sure that there aren't any hands raised. Okay. Move on to our next item then. Uh, Legisstar 64724 interim update from the Traffic Calming Subcommittee and request for extending the report deadline to July 15th, 2021. Um, so I'll be, I'll be handling this. Um, as I also chair the Traffic Calming Subcommittee. Um, so as you know, we, the, the two bodies created this group, um, I think in early, very early last year. Um, and we were intending to meet sometime around March initially, but of course COVID hit and we didn't get started until, um, I think mid to late summer. And, um, we were, let me see here. Sorry, I'm juggling a few different screens. All right. So our charge was to, um, identify opportunities to improve outcomes and processes related to traffic calming, safety enhancements, and pedestrian bicycle system enhancements in the city of Madison, um, with a goal of equitable distribution of resources that improves safety and encourages increased walking and biking across the city. Um, I am very proud to say that this group has worked extremely hard over that time. Um, we've met weekly for the past couple of months, um, keeping in mind our existing deadline of April 15th. And I took a look before this meeting at what, um, we brought to the two bodies as an update back in December of 2020. And I was a, a little bit shocked with the amount of progress that we've made in that time. We have really, um, added significantly to, um, the ideas that we put down on paper at that time. And not only have the, have the members of the subcommittee worked extremely hard, but we've had Renee Callaway, Tom Moore, and of course Patrick with us, um, throughout all of it. And then other, other staff members have joined, um, here and there at different meetings. Um, in discussing in our meeting last week how we would, um, provide an update, um, we, we talked a little bit about whether or not to provide, um, a draft of our working, uh, recommendations document or to do this verbally. And we settled on verbally largely because we ourselves have struggled a bit with, um, getting stuck on the wording in a document and, and, and having it distract us from having the higher level of conversation. So, um, so we're going to do this verbally. What I'm going to do is, um, briefly go over our, our major recommendations, talk about, um, where we are, um, where we feel like we still need to go. Um, and then, uh, open it up for questions and discussion or, or, um, or feedback. So our primary recommendation has not changed from December. We're still recommending that, um, the major existing traffic calming and ped bike enhancement programs be consolidated into a single new program that we're calling Safe Streets Madison, that we're creating, SSM. And, excuse me. And we're also recommending that the budgeting accounts and funding for those programs be consolidated into this program as well. Those major programs being the Neighborhood Traffic Management Program, the Pedestrian Bicycle Enhancement Program, the Safe Routes to Schools Program and, and Vision Zero. Now, um, this would not be a, um, a replacement for Vision Zero. I want to make that clear right away. Vision Zero will still be Vision Zero. Um, it's really more about, um, allocating resources in a way that is actually more consistent with how Vision Zero allocates its resources. So we're recommending that this Safe Streets Madison align its priorities with other ongoing initiatives such as Complete Streets, as I mentioned, Vision Zero and the Metro Transit Network redesign. And that the majority of the program resources for those programs that I mentioned previously be focused on projects that meet the program's two key priorities. Number one being implementing traffic safety measures in a fair and equitable manner to eliminate traffic deaths and serious injuries on city streets. So this is largely, um, Vision Zero, right? All of this language was taken from Vision Zero. Using data from the high injury network to determine where safety improvements should be made. And the second major priority is improving connectivity by closing gaps in the city's pedestrian bicycle network to ensure that it is accessible to all ages and abilities. Both of these priorities would, um, improve, uh, I should say, would, um, facilitate walking, biking, and transit, improving safety for vulnerable users, um, by creating, uh, safe and low-stress networks. What we're really talking about here is a shift away from, uh, project identification and selection that's based on resident complaints and perhaps, um, largely focused on speeding to one that is focused on where we know we have safety issues based on the high injury network and where we know we have, uh, connectivity gaps in our pedestrian network and our bicycle network. That is really the core of, uh, what we're recommending. We do have a number of additional recommendations. I'm not going to go through them all, um, as it would take, I think, too much time. Um, but I will try to hit some of the, the major ones. We talked, um, a bit about street reconstruction and how it's a prime opportunity for improving, um, safety and connectivity. So we're making a recommendation that, uh, making safety and closing gaps in the ped bike network be key priorities in the selection of, uh, reconstruction projects, that is, selection of roads, uh, to be reconstructed. And that when streets are reconsidered for reconstruction for non-safety reasons, say for utility reasons, that the city should proactively consider the need for traffic calming and filling gaps in that ped bike network. So the idea here is to sort of get out ahead of, of it and not, uh, not be doing all of this all the time as retrofits. Um, we're recommending that the requests for calming be continued, uh, continue to be accommodated through current channels. Um, that would include, um, you know, residents making requests, but that, as I said before, that staff take a proactive look at the crash data in the ped bike network, prioritizing those sources of projects. And, um, uh, reducing the emphasis on resident complaints being the primary driver of project priorities. Um, we're also recommending that the program, uh, staff proactively engage with neighborhood resource teams and other neighborhood contacts in order to help identify areas where there are serious traffic safety concerns, where residents do not feel safe walking or biking, and gaps in the low-stress all ages networks, um, exist. We're recommending that, um, some prescreening be done to determine if projects meet program priorities. Um, if, uh, the project can be included in a planned or upcoming project, um, it might be more efficient to defer that request and address the issues in conjunction with a planned project. Um, recommending that, um, uh, the, this program builds a toolbox of best practices using NACTO guidance, including solutions maybe not currently or typically used, um, with best practices reviewed and updated periodically. And all options or solutions and for interventions should be considered. As is current practice, different levels of problem solving would be utilized, including full street reconstruction versus smaller, easily resolved issues, piloting, testing, iterative approach, um, to solving problems. We're recommending the Transportation Commission, review and approval be required for requests made to this, uh, the new program, um, which is, um, how, uh, things largely go now, uh, for ped bike enhancement and for neighborhood traffic, um, management. And the TC should consider all program priorities and evaluation criteria when making, uh, decisions regarding project prioritization and funding. And that they should do this at least annually. Um, as I mentioned, current sources would continue to be allowed for requests, phone calls, emails, alders, staff, events, uh, neighborhood meetings, NRTs, and community organizations. And, uh, we're recommending that, uh, staff initiate proactive engagement with community residents using strategies for connecting, um, recognizing that not, not all residents have equal access to technology, equal knowledge of city programs and processes, or equal access to city staff boards, committees, or commissions. And that the program be, uh, transparent in all aspects, uh, so residents can understand the current program priorities and the decision-making process. Um, we recommended that the city continue with its existing programs for this year, um, but begin adopting the priorities and project selection for this construction season. Um, we're hoping that, uh, full, full implementation of the new program could be, um, uh, taking place in 2022. However, that, exactly what that timeline looks like is still one of the things that we are, um, are discussing. We're recommending a public education initiative, um, and, and some website updates to introduce the new program to, to residents and, uh, having staff work with alders to facilitate communication with residents about the transition to the new program. And then we're also recommending that the TC, um, advise staff and, and, um, uh, serve in an oversight role during the implementation process, or perhaps a subcommittee of the TC if that's appropriate. And then, uh, that staff evaluate the effectiveness of individual interventions, um, uh, after project completion on a targeted basis. So that's kind of the core, um, major recommendations. Um, we, um, identified a number of other issues that we are recommending for further investigation, either by city staff or by, uh, the TC or TPPB. A number of things kind of worked their way to the surface in our, uh, discussions. Um, looking at a citywide reduction in speed limit on residential streets from 25 to 20. Um, recommending, um, the emergency services routes, um, are mapped, the common EMS routes, classifying them as either major or minor routes. Um, other cities have done this, uh, in this context. So the conversation can be had more broadly about the, um, the, uh, balancing the needs of emergency services with safety for vulnerable users. Um, how best, uh, to best address areas with traffic safety issues, um, which are located in split jurisdictions. Um, consideration of, um, perhaps transitioning to smaller fire equipment for the fleet, uh, so that streets may be narrowed. Um, implementing complete street standards for new construction, uh, reevaluation of turning templates. This would be the turning radii at intersections and channelized right turns. Reevaluation of where traffic enforcement should be focused in the city. Potential use of automated enforcement. A conversation about connectivity and what that means in different contexts. Um, we've, we had conversations about what level of danger, deaths, and injuries are we willing to accept as a city on our roads and streets, including on our emergency routes? And what does it mean for a route or intersection to fail? Does it mean that a car has to wait or a vehicle has to wait for more than one light cycle? Does it mean traffic is backing up during rush hour? Or does it mean someone has been killed or seriously injured? So, excuse me. So those are some of the, um, areas for further investigation that we, uh, came up with, um, that may be referenced in our final report, but may not. Um, but there are certainly things that we want to keep an eye on. So key issues that we still need to, um, iron out before we are, before we're really done. We don't want, and we don't want to rush the process. Um, prioritization process and pre-screening. Um, so last, this past week, we looked at a really good, um, first take at a spreadsheet that staff put together, um, to help put some of these ideas that I've laid out into something that they can actually use or put numbers on to prioritize projects. Um, things on that spreadsheet include documented safety issues, quantified, uh, pet issues, um, bike issues, um, that is, the gaps. Uh, trying to put a number on a proposed solution's impact on safety, an impact on the ped gap, impact on the bike gap. And trying to put a number on an impact on, um, areas of high social vulnerability. Um, we also, um, spent earlier this month, um, a meeting discussing equity in the SSM program. And this is one of the reasons this subcommittee was formed, as I mentioned earlier. A lot of, uh, discussion took place around, uh, neighbor, neighborhoods with a lot of resources, um, perhaps getting a disproportionate amount of the, uh, the resources. And we had a very productive meeting. We had Alison Dugan from the Public Health and Medicine Dane County, and then, um, Atari Sakha from the Neighborhood Resource, who is the Neighborhood Resource Coordinator in the, in the mayor's office. And they helped work with us to discuss the ResJ process guide and tools and applying them to the SSM program. And, um, at the end of that meeting, we, we were, um, very strongly, um, in support of coming, really circling back, and we have yet to do that, to this, um, this issue of equity and really going through our priority recommendations, some of which you've heard from me just now, um, to ask the questions, are we, are we leaving anyone out? Are there unintended consequences? Will what we're proposing work for residents that we, that most need it and the ones that we're trying to, trying to help? So we do have a little bit more work to do, um, particularly on the prioritization process and producing something that, something like a spreadsheet that the staff can, can take and input. Um, these different things, data from the high injury network, things from the ped bike gap, um, feedback from residents, and have, um, a way to, uh, identify and prioritize projects that's in line with what, um, recommendations that we've come up with. Um, so that's, that's the update. Uh, we're asking for an extension of the final report to July 15th. Um, I, I feel like we're fairly confident at this point that we can, that we can hit that. Um, it will allow us to go from one, uh, a meeting every week to maybe a meeting every other week, which has the benefit of giving us time to actually do, do some of the work outside of meetings. And what I mean by that is individuals have, have taken on chunks of this and brought them back. Um, and then sometimes having only one week in between meetings just doesn't leave enough time as, um, you know, many of us, uh, as many of the rest of you serve on multiple committees, we have, you know, work and, and other things in our lives too. So, um, at this point, I'll take questions. The, other members of the Traffic Calming Subcommittee, if you feel that I've misrepresented something or left something out, please feel free to raise your hand and add it or correct it. Chris McHale, go ahead.
Thanks. Uh, once again, this sounds great. So thanks for everyone's work on this. I have a question that probably someone in the subcommittee could answer, but if Yang's around, um, it might be helpful to have him weigh in. Um, cool. Um, so I, I guess we all kind of recognize that the current separation of programs is problematic in a bunch of ways. How it does sort of, um, create a very clean workflow, I think, on, on the city's end of things. So have you started thinking about, um, how the, how this would change the workflow, hopefully for the better? Um, and, um, how you could implement that pretty quickly on the timeline that, that Tom was talking about?
Yeah, thank you. That's a great question. Um, um, so, uh, you know, we, uh, from staff level, we haven't, uh, had a chance to, you know, discuss a lot about this, uh, but I did do some thinking about this. Uh, I think that definitely puts on a con, sorry. But I think the, the benefits probably going to be always the downside. You know, to have everything together so that we can, I think the biggest benefit is that we can really look into, do some improvements at all levels. And connecting, you know, all the possible tools that we, we can use. Also, maybe sometime, sometime not be limited by, you know, the artificial limitations placed on each category of projects. So I think that's probably the, you know, the biggest benefit is we can probably do a much more cohesive way of identifying improvements that we can do to improve safety in a city. I think, you know, the, you know, one concern, of course, is that, you know, as, as you mentioned exactly, you know, there used to be a very clear kind of boundaries, and we can fit into things into different categories. Sometimes that's good because we do want to reserve maybe some of the money for, you know, really critical things. For example, Vision Zero. And we want to make sure we have resources to really target, you know, the, the space, the place that it really need, like the high injury network. So really, you know, commit to, commit a certain amount of money for that. Because that, you know, that's probably the, the most spent for the, for the money. But we also face a lot of pressures, right, from all other directions. We, for example, you know, the commission just reviewed the, you know, over 150 requests for traffic calming projects. And we have a list, an even longer list, requests for ped bike improvements projects. So obviously, our funding would not be able to allow us to take care of every project. So, you know, many projects have to be left out or pushed back for the future. So I think those may have put a lot of pressure on us to use other funds that, that, you know, should really be used for, you know, hygiene, hygiene network. So I think we, we need to figure out some kind of structure, even though we look at things in, as a whole, more cohesively, but maybe still have something earmarked for, you know, critical needs, such as high injury network. Thank you for the great question.
Thanks. Thank you, Chris, and thank you, Yang, for the response. Alder Foster, go ahead.
Yeah, I think, I agree very much with what Yang was saying. And I think, I mean, number one, we anticipate a high amount of overlap between these two categories. It certainly is the case today that some of the areas where we have the more safety issues, we also have serious gaps in that ped bike infrastructure. And so a big part of the concept is to do exactly what Yang was saying, is provide the opportunity to address both of those things at once and sort of apply, do, I think, more intense interventions where they're, where they would be, where they would work well, and also do it in a, perhaps a slightly larger area. So not just focus on one block, but on the whole corridor, if that's what makes sense. So that was sort of one of the key drivers for it. And to one of other Yang's points, I, at least personally, and we've talked about it just briefly, and I'm sure we will review it and it will wind up in the final report, some version of it. But I, I very much agree with the need to have at least like a minimum percent or dollar amount that's going particularly for, for the safety improvement for Vision Zero. So from my perspective, I mean, my starting point would be to ensure that at least as much as, as earmarks today for Vision Zero is going there and that we're not eating into that with any other kinds of projects. My actual hope and expectation is that it would perhaps go the other way and that we would make some of the current money that's, that's being used on traffic calming projects that are essentially only, only addressing speed where we don't actually have any known real safety issues and where there's also no known specific pedestrian or bicycle needs associated with those higher speeds and to really shift our efforts to actually tackle where we know we have manifested problems. So I think that's probably one of the core recommendations is really taking some of that money that's in the Speed Hump Program and not just putting Speed Humps anywhere where we have speeding, which is almost everywhere, and instead really focusing it more to address those name, those known safety issues as well as the bike gaps.
Thank you, Alder Foster. Yang, go ahead.
I just wanted to ask if Tom Moore, who is, you know, a main staff person along with Renee for Subcommittee, to see if he has any thoughts, if he wants to add anything.
Yeah, thanks. Now, now, I don't have much to add. I think, I think it's been going well so far. I think we're on the right track. We're just kind of working out the details. And as far as implementing, I think, I don't really see a problem implementing a new program when we have it finalized. We're still taking complaints, requests right now, and we'll continue to take them. We're just letting people know that we're kind of in a transition process right now. So I don't really see too much of an issue there. So, thanks.
Thanks, Tom. Yeah, Tom and Renee have been very good at keeping us, keeping us grounded. And it's, it's been a highest priority of ours to create something that works for staff. Otherwise, it, what's the point, right? So, yeah, it's been really great having them as, having their assistance in crafting this. Yang, did you have anything else to add? So see your hand's still up there. Okay. Ian, go ahead.
Thanks. I just wanted to take this opportunity in front of the whole group to, you referenced, referenced it earlier, Tom, but to thank the members of the Subcommittee because we have had just phenomenal participation from the people on the Subcommittee. And, and that's not just at attending meetings, but also working on things outside of the, the meetings. So I, I think the only reason why we are where we are is because everybody is just really committed to working on this project. So I just, I, I think it's really important to let everybody know that there's just a lot of work that's gone into this. And we definitely appreciate the feedback that we've been getting from both the TC and the TPPB. But I just wanted to make that extra recognition for the people on the group.
Thank you, Ian. Any additional questions for myself or other members of the Subcommittee? Obviously, you can reach out to us at any time if anything comes up. So then, I'm sorry, Alder Campbell, go ahead.
Well, I was just gonna move that the deadline be extended to July 15th for the final report.
Thank you, Alder Campbell. So we need to do this, I think, as two separate bodies. So I'll take it as a motion for the Transportation Policy and Planning Board. Is there a second from the Transportation Policy and Planning Board?
I'll suck at that.
Thank you, Alder Furman. Any discussion? Seeing none, members of the Transportation Policy and Planning Board, all those in favor of extending the deadline for the final report for the Traffic Calming Subcommittee to July 15th, 2021, please unmute yourselves and say aye.
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 Opposed, no? TPPB Chair believes it's unanimous. If you'd like to register a no vote, please raise your hand. Seeing none, that is unanimous from the Transportation Policy and Planning Board. Chair Kovac?
Yes, thanks, Tom. We'll need a motion from someone on the Transportation Commission in order to, Chris, go ahead.
Yeah, I'll make the same motion for the Transportation Commission.
Okay, so we have, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a second from a couple of different people. All right, we have a motion and a second in order to extend the deadline for the final report from the Traffic Calming Subcommittee from April 15th, 2021 to July 15th, 2021. We use the same voting method that the Policy Board just used. Everybody on the Transportation Commission, please unmute yourself, and if you're in favor, please say aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Okay, I believe that's unanimous. If, if anyone is opposed, please raise your hand. Okay, the motion is carried.
Thank you, Chair Kovac. All right, thank you, everyone. Appreciate that. And I'm sure you will continue to work hard until July 15th to produce the best product that we can. All right, our next item tonight is Legistar 64725, updates from staff on a number of items, including Complete Streets, Completing Green Streets, Vision Zero, High Injury Network, Bus Rapid Transit, Metro Network, Metro Transit Network redesign study, and parking, including an update on the RP3 Working Group.
Okay, I'll cover first three items. So I will share my, my screen for a brief presentation. Okay. Can I see the screen? Okay. All right, so, so the first update is about Complete Green Streets. So the biggest thing is going on, you know, among the collaboration between the staff team and also the consultant team is to expand the contract a little bit, actually, quite a, quite a, quite a, quite a bit. There are two main components. The first one is added engagement. So, you know, as we think about engaging public, you know, for the multiple initiatives going on in transportation, Innovation Zero, Complete Green Streets, Transit Network redesign, and others. You know, we're concerned about the fatigue from the community as we, you know, trying to target the same group of people, just for all the different projects. And we also happen to, you know, heard about some presentations on this topic at a, at a conference recently. So we thought it's a good idea to look into whether we can reasonably combine some of the engagement. You know, we looked into all the initiatives in DOT that's going on right now. And it feels like Vision Zero and Complete Green Streets had a lot of synergy. They complement each other really well, and we are largely trying to target same group of people. So we decided to combine the engagement efforts. So we're adding, we're amending the contract and adding Vision Zero engagement to this. The consultants also work on a couple of pre-engaging folks groups meetings. Equity by Design, our equity consultant is working on that, getting a lot of really good people together. There also will be additional engagement efforts that targeted towards historically underrepresented populations. And so those will be determined, you know, once the results are analyzed from the folks group. We also increased my funding for development of some educational and messaging tools that can be used as we goes forward. Those includes some infographics, some really good, you know, short videos explaining, you know, what's going on just to regular citizens, you know, very easy to understand for a net. Another area for expansion is on green infrastructure. This is, you know, most of the amount of work in this expansion. There are a few components in this. Identify where, how to incorporate measures that foster tree canopy within Rite-Away. And also for permeable surfaces, provide a screen tool and feasibility analysis tool for that. A third component is distributed green infrastructure in the Rite-Away, you know, such as the different, different type of treatments, like green gardens, and also prepare a stormwater quality and quantity toolbox. Finally, we need to figure out how to pay for all this. So assessment, create a screening and feasibility tool for assessment of these green infrastructures within the street party matrix. So the next steps for this study is to finalize the expanding the contract. And that actually makes me some time as we go through the, you know, all the required processes set by the city standards. But luckily, we already have some body built in, for example, for engagement. So we don't have to wait for the contract to be officially amended for us to start to all, some of the work. So some, so some of the work is already underway. We need to update the project schedule and to add all this work. We need to create an engagement plan. We're also, the consultants are all working on website and doing a lot of data analysis at this point, such as gathering the plan, the plans, resolutions, and initiatives that passed, you know, past many years on transportation, really put them all together in one place. And also analyze the gaps and also do a lot of a kind of mapping work right now. So that's kind of the, the next steps. And we also prepared, anticipate the committee meeting schedule. You know, this is a tentative, so things could be added or deleted from the, from the list. And, you know, we may move the, the dates as well. But we do want to keep TPPB very well informed on this and get an input and direction from the body along the way. So on May 15th, we're planning to update TPPB on the overall project schedule and also present the pre-engagement findings so that we can, you know, work on their TPPB and finish engagement plan for next steps. We also hope to have the results ready from the gap analysis and also some maps to show, to show the, to show the board. And on June 19th or August 2nd, we want to review public inputs with the board and also present a proposal on the model hierarchy and discuss the foundations for making decisions. That's the model priorities and considering other street type factors. We don't have a date yet, but, you know, shortly after that, we want to bring type college and other topics to the, to the committee. So I think this is kind of the, the plan for the near future, and we'll keep you updated as we go. With that, I will move forward to Vision Zero and High Injury Network. And maybe, maybe take questions at the end of, you know, of my presentation or, you know, after all the items are covered. But for, for High Injury Network, it's, you know, part of Vision Zero. So I kind of included that as our safety data action plan component. So as we discussed with both bodies before, you know, we found a lot of challenges of funding scientific and also practical way to produce a high injury network every year. So we presented, you know, a few options. I could have staff went through many, many versions. And, you know, the more we dig into it, the more complicated it gets, and there, there are more challenges just, you know, surface, you know, from the data, from GIS, and from statistics. So there, there are some questions to be answered. But we really don't want to wait for, you know, all those questions to be answered before we, you know, utilize this tool, you know, for, for instance, such as, you know, project selection. So we took advice from TPPB, and we came up with interim High Injury Network for 2021. So the map showing here is mostly based on data and also spatial analysis. So staff is finalizing this and making it more readable. It shows, you know, some segments and intersections. So we'll present this to both bodies very soon at, at your next meeting. But, you know, we hope to start to use this, you know, for 2021 project selection. In the meantime, as we discussed, we reached out to UW Traffic Operations and the Safety Lab we reach out to UW Traffic Operations and Safety Lab for particular assistance, a better way to define a Vision Zero High Injury Network and also that we can repeat the definition every year in the future and come up with a new network with the latest data. So UW team and the city team has been working back and forth on our proposal. Well, we'll bring that proposal to TPBB at the next TPBB meeting. But here's some kind of the key components of that. So first task is network segmentation. So use GS layers to create intersection and roadway segments. So just create those basic components that we can associate the data to it. And the second step is associate data to it. Those are geometric operational attributes to further categorize the types of intersections and roadway segments. And that does not only include safety data, but also operational data, such as type of volume, speed and other things. That's kind of goes to data collection part, just associate all the data to each segment. And something new that UW feel really strongly about, we initially didn't see that need, but the more we talk to the experts, the more we think that's reasonable. That's a developed crash prediction model. The reason is that crashes sometimes are random. It may happen, a really bad crash may happen in one spot, one year. We may never see that again. Just a lot of randomness in that. So the effort is to compare observed crash data to average crash occurrences of sites with similar geographic operational crash trend and really take that kind of bias out of the equation. And we would like, you know, the UW teams help to explore two approaches to develop a high injury network. The approach one is a simple approach, so that's just based on the natural segmentation performed spatial analysis based on observed crash data for the past, let's say, five years and come up with a high injury network. The second approach is much more sophisticated. That's based on the crash prediction model and use empirical base analysis to obtain unbiased estimates. So it actually takes a PhD to explain what the empirical base is. Actually, I forgot, I'm a PhD. But even I'm sure even I cannot explain that very well. But I think at next meeting, our colleagues from UW will do that. So that's much more sophisticated model. So well, I think as we go, we'll work with TPBB defining which way to go. Another update area is on six streets. So right now, we are working on a project list for 2021 Vision Zero projects. So we actually have a staff steering team meeting this morning. We reviewed that list, what's they're working on, but we hope to bring the list to the commission for approval in the near future. Another main initiative going on is what we call 20 is plenty. So for this year, we would like to do a couple pilot locations. So this is basically reduce the limit on residential streets in the city of Madison systematically. So right now, the default speed is 25 mile per hour. So we're wondering why that can't be reduced to 20 mile per hour. As we all know, speed really play an important role on outcome of the crashes. 20 mile per hour, 25 mile per hour can make a difference. So we are exploring that. Hopefully pull forward a couple pilots and from there, maybe implementing that citywide in the near future. Also, another team is Safe People. We are launching a email list and a newsletter. And also, we are working with the city's public information officers on creating a toolkit to assist with messaging because this is not just a traffic injury initiative or a DOT initiative. It's really about the whole community. So many agencies are involved and many public information officers are working on it. So we really want to have a unified and clear message as we communicate with the public. And we also launching some public informational campaign. I think we heard some suggestions from the board and commission. So we are working on some possibilities. So right now, we're thinking about doing some campaign on youth pedestrians based on the input from the commission. Right now, we still have some ads on the buses for Vision Zero. That's kind of more general with a message talking about the safety start with all of us. For this new campaign, we're thinking about focus more on pedestrian safety. For a safe vehicles group, there's a lot of movements on there recently. The first city's Safe Driver Award will be presented this Friday actually by the mayor on behalf of Team City. So each department selected the two winners and really kind of trying to promote a safe driving culture among our workforce. Also, Fleet is moving a lot on GPS installation for vehicles. So pretty soon, we're expecting to have features such as notification on speeding, seat values, hard acceleration and harsh braking. So those will be really useful data for us to kind of coach drive city fleet drivers on driving behaviors. Fleet also has been working on some city policies as well, such as no cellphone usage while driving, producing some reports on city drivers and also develop defensive driving trainings. So let's move on to Safety Focus and Enforcement Group. So right now, the group is preparing some really good data. One data is on driver behaviors that are main contributors to serious fatal crashes. What are those behaviors are? And also, as we discussed before, really put some data on racial disparities in traffic related citations. And they are also examining the impact of enforcement on driver behavior. So I also want to emphasize a bit on the engagement. So this actually is for both Vision Zero and Company Green Streets. So we kind of think about, call it, let's talk streets. And again, Equity by Design is holding a pre-engagement folks group in early April. And they are getting many leaders and other influencers from the historically underrepresented populations in the city. And also focus on how to best engage with the diverse communities, what are the most important issues and how to message the project. And the general public engagement hopefully will start in May based on information from the folks groups. Again, this is for both initiatives. And the consultants is also working on a website, one for engagement and one specific to Company Green Streets. I would also like to kind of conclude my presentation with anticipation schedule for committee meetings for Vision Zero. April 5th, that's an STBB meeting, we want to be there. Talk about the interim High Injury Map, just provide a general overview. And we want to present the UW TOPS Lab proposal. And also want to give a broad overview of the 2021 Vision Zero projects and get any inputs. And we also want to discuss the action plan deadline extension. So right now, the deadline is June. But last year, when the resolution passed through council, we're thinking about maybe June is not quite adequate because of all the challenges brought by the COVID. Actually, COVID even lasted longer than what we thought at the time. So we need to extend the timeline mainly for engagement. So we're thinking about the end of the year and we'll discuss more with TPBB in early April. On the 14th, we want to be at the TC talking about the High Injury Network, the interim version for 2021, and we'd like to have that being accepted. And also, we will present the TOPS Lab proposal as part of the 2021 Vision Zero project list and hopefully get approval for all the projects. So the project with UW will be a project on that list. April 19th, we'll be back to TPBB with an overview on 20 is plenty pilot. And at the 28th, we want to be at the TC hopefully to get approval from TC on the pilot locations for the initiative this year. And May 17th, we want to be at TPBB to discuss the combined Vision Zero and Company Green Streets engagement strategies. As I mentioned before, we talked about the Company Green Streets. And June 28th, we want to present a working draft of the Vision Zero action plan to the board. And looking further down, in September, we want to provide kind of a near final draft of the Vision Zero action plan and taking any inputs and directions. And hopefully by the time the project with UW TOPS Lab, if approved by a TC, we can get some preliminary results on that. And finally, December, we would like to bring kind of the final version of the Vision Zero action plan to TPBB and hopefully get approval for that. With that, that's all I have. Thank you.
All right, before we go to the next one, Alder Foster has his hand up, so go ahead.
Yeah, thank you, Yang. It's pretty impressive to see all of that put into one place. These are all, like, these three initiatives are just critical and we've been planning for them and talking about them and getting them approved in budgets. And to see them in the works is really exciting. One question on the injury network analysis that you're doing with TOPS. In that slide, it referenced a lot of references around crash data. Is the focus still around sort of high injury fatality crashes? Or is the analysis including a broader data around all crashes?
That is a great question. So we still like to have a really focus on those high impact crashes. So actually, UW developed that EPTO factors. If you remember, that's called the proper damage equivalent of all crashes. Like if we place a factor on property damage only crash as one. Fatality is, I think, if I remember correctly, is something like 155. So which means that we should place a lot of moral stress on fatalities that cause fatalities and serious injuries. So we still like to see that be a critical component of that. But we also had our discussions, pipe bike crashes. You know, those may not immediately have a fatality or serious injuries associated with them. But we think that the outcome can be quite different if the situation is a little bit different. If because people on food, on bikes are much more vulnerable without a protection of metal casing around them. So even if it's just a minor injury, it might not be, could be a fatality if the condition is changed a little bit. So we are talking with them, how can we incorporate that to it? But I think we are focused on more pipe bike for the minor injuries, for minor crashes, not applied to all minor vehicle only type of crashes.
Okay, yeah, that sounds great. I think it's important that we keep the focus exactly how you set it and not get distracted off of high volume of property only motor vehicle crashes. So it sounds like you're on track with that. And I just had one suggestion in the overall Vision Zero framework. The one thing that we've talked a little bit at TPBB is reducing VMT as a key safety strategy. And so obviously, making driving safer is an important space. But actually, reducing the amount of driving has really significant potential impacts on Vision Zero. So just wanted to make sure that one, I don't know if it has a natural home right now in one of those subgroups, and it's obviously a focus for the policy and planning board overall. But I think it'd be really, I'd like to make sure that is also called out in the strategies associated with Vision Zero, because I think it's one we shouldn't lose sight of. Thank you for all the great work.
Thank you. Great point. Yeah, I'll write it down. I'll make sure to bring it to the staff team on that.
Thank you, Alder Foster. Thank you, Yang. Bill, go ahead.
Thank you, Tom. Question, I was at a meeting this morning, a statewide meeting, and talking about safety and speed limits came up. And I want to make sure that the city attorney's office has been fully engaged in the 20 is plenty program to make sure we have that well documented, that we're within state statutes, that we can enforce that speed limit.
Thank you, Bill. Yeah, we'll talk to the attorney's office on that.
Yeah, I think you're going to need to discuss that with a good research on that because there didn't seem to be complete consensus at the state level about what cities can do with modifying speed limits.
You're right. Yeah, you're right on that.
Thank you, Bill. Any additional questions at this point? All right, seeing none, we'll continue.
Yeah, I should also add to Bill's comment about the city's speed limit. All the limitations that we may have from state, both from state, actually from federal level, such as IMUTCD. And actually, there is a kind of proposed changes to IMUTCD is out there. It was published in December last year by the Federal Highway Administration. So right now, it's under comments period. We do have a lot of concerns about that. And the speed limit setting is one big component of that. So actually, Tom and I have written a letter to Federal Highway Administration and oppose that and request the US DOT to do a kind of complete overhaul of IMUTCD, such as for a number of things, as we discussed at the previous meetings. For example, the unreasonably high level of pedestrian activities needed to warrant a transit, for example, that's just one example. And other changes to make it very difficult to provide more, I guess, higher level or different type of treatments for pedestrians, bicycles and transit vehicles in a complex urban setting. It works for freeways, but it really does not work for a complex urban setting when there are manufacturers involved. So also, the national organization, NACTO, is also behind that and we are part of the effort, hopefully demanding some changes on IMUTCD. Hopefully, in the future, we can have a setup of much more reasonable, better regulations to work with. Thank you.
I think the next presentation is High Injury Network, if I'm not mistaken, or was that? That was the most recent one. I'll try to transit perhaps, I think, is next.
Yeah. I can take that. Good evening, everyone. I'll just walk through a handful of updates on the BRT project. So first, we've received our class of action for the environmental study that will be required for the BRT project. That did come back as a categorical exclusion, which is good for us. That's what we were seeking. And so that will, it certainly, it's called a documented categorical exclusion. So it certainly will take time and we expect it to take nine months to a year to actually complete that work. But ultimately, that will streamline that process quite a bit for us. We are still waiting on the FTA Small Starts Rating. I think I've talked with, at least with the TC in the past, that that is a report that typically comes out with the president's budget request that rates the projects on a scale of low, medium-low, medium, medium-high to high. And that typically comes out in February, but in presidential transition years, it almost always gets delayed. I think in 2017, it ended up being like May. And so we're waiting on that. We are optimistic that we will get a medium-high rating for Madison, which is about as high as we can ever expect to get. Typically, the only places that ever get a high rating are those that have extremely high levels of densities, like Seattle or Chicago or San Francisco or New York. Just based on the formulas there, it's impossible for a city our size to get a high rating. So I think a medium-high rating would be great. But technically, even a medium rating would qualify us for that grant program. We have a design competition for our stations currently live that we are soliciting people to submit their design concepts to us. That closes in about a week on the 31st. From there, we'll go through a process where we eliminate those applications that did not meet our, did not actually meet the requests, but they didn't fill out the appropriate paperwork or whatever. And then we'll go through a process where we have our design consultant, AECOM, review those, the remaining submissions for just kind of a baseline technical feasibility to determine, is this actually buildable? Is it buildable within anything close to our actual budget? And does it actually meet the goals of the system? You know, if someone designs a 300-foot concrete monolith as the station, or obelisk, that's what I was looking for. You know, that's not really what we're asking for, right? So we'll be able to screen those out. And then we'll go through a staff report process where we where we kind of evaluate the different remaining designs against our evaluation criteria. We'll consult with city historic preservation, state historic preservation, the UW campus architects, basically anyone that would have potential veto power on our final design. And ultimately, put together a staff report that recommends designs to the Urban Design Commission. And our plan is to present that to the UDC in May. That concept would then be given to our designers, AECOM, who would then kind of mold it into an actual set of actual renderings, actual plans, something that could be built and costed and all of that. We have an RFQ on the street right now, also for a program management consultant to help us manage and lead the project. You know, we all have other duties and eventually this project is going to reach a level that is going to be more than a full-time job for one individual, just to manage all the different consultants and contractors and things. And so we do have an RFQ to bring in someone to help with that. Again, we hope to have that selection made, at least the staff recommendation in April, and then start moving it through the council approval process. Just a recap of schedule. So we are worried about, we've completed what's called 10% plans and they're working towards a 30% set of plans, which we expect to have this summer. That essentially defines much of the two-dimensional details that most people would be interested in, you know, where the curb lines are, where the station edges are, things like that. And then we expect to have another set of public meetings and public input at that point, once we have that information shared with folks. And then the consultants will continue on with their 60% design, which will contain a little bit more of the the detail that maybe will be less interesting to the general public, but starting to work out slopes and drainage and pavement thicknesses and things like that, that are all very important for the build. But maybe a little less of interest, I think, to the general populace. And then finally, I wanted to highlight for all of you that we've had some discussions with the city of Sun Prairie about the eastern terminal of the BRT. They are very much interested in continuing the BRT to Sun Prairie. And I believe that we've found a solution that I think will, is kind of good for everyone. I'm going to show an image of what that would look like. Maybe. I am not able to. Maybe I cannot. Do you all see my screen there? So essentially, as you know, the plan has always been to end the project at Easttown Mall or East Springs Drive in Washington. But with that, there's always been a Route 23 that runs from Sun Prairie all the way to the square during peak hour only. That is paid for entirely by the city of Sun Prairie. They pay for the whole route end-to-end because it is essentially an express service from Sun Prairie to downtown. And there's also a separate Route 26, which serves the American Center and really just terminates at Easttown Mall. It doesn't go any further require transfers. So if we kind of fold the BRT with those projects or those two routes, we could create something that looks like this, where essentially every other bus continues to the Sun Prairie Park and Ride and every other bus continues through the American Center and actually terminating at our new satellite facility at what is currently a FedEx building on Hanson Road. This does a couple of things for us. One, it's essentially revenue neutral from an operating cost perspective. The extension to Sun Prairie can be, they can repurpose their dollars from Route 23 to this and it's essentially revenue neutral for them. For the red portion, we can repurpose the Route 26 dollars that are currently being paid for by UW Health into that extension and essentially be revenue neutral. But what it does for Sun Prairie is it gives a direct connection via BRT, gives them all-day service, which they currently have peak-only service. And also extends that service all the way through Madison. The current Route 23 just gets to the square and turns around, so to get to the rest of the way to campus would require transfers. This would give them all the way through campus and all the way to the west side of Madison if they'd like. And for UW Health and the American Center in general, it offers a transfer-free trip to downtown and points west rather than the current route, which requires them to transfer to Easttown Mall to get anywhere and then continue on the trip. And then finally, and selfishly a bit for Metro, it offers us a direct bus connection between our two main facilities, where we can, you know, for staff that do need to move from one facility to the other, they're able to use this route to do so. So overall, again, operationally, I think it's better for everyone. For, on an operating cost basis, it's a net zero change. There would be some capital cost increase. We would need a few more BRT buses and we would need to build two end-of-line charging locations where these blue dots are instead of just one at Easttown Mall. But we're having those discussions with Sun Prairie and we do anticipate that they will contribute capital dollars to this as well. So, yeah, this is something that I hope and expect to be bringing to to these bodies at some point soon. That is everything that I have on BRT. Do you have any questions on that before I move on to the network redesign?
Alder Campbell, go ahead.
How many more buses will we need to buy to ensure that 10-minute service on that line?
It'd be two extra buses. But they would be replacing the buses that would have been on the Route 26 and the Route 23. So it's not a net increase in the total number of buses. It's just more BRT buses and fewer local buses that we would need.
But the BRT buses are more expensive, right?
Yes, certainly.
Okay. And then an extra charging station. So I'm just trying to do the math, like the time, the timing of the bus, two more buses. That's basically each of those extra segments takes an extra 20 minutes?
It would be about 10, yeah, approximately round trip, 20 minutes.
Okay. Okay, thanks.
Thank you, Alder Campbell. Thank you, Justin. Harald, go ahead.
Thanks. A quick question about the station design competition. Can you say what the goal of using this process versus a more traditional process are? I'm a little bit concerned, like, you know, as you have described, you had this open call where you have some basic requirements and then you're going to go to stakeholders and refine things and make sure everybody's happy with that. I'm just somewhat concerned that, I mean, A, it's might slow things down, but it might also, this like where you have these multiple lines of input can increase the cost per station, which, to my understanding, is one of the major drivers of capital cost for bus rapid transit. And I mean, you know, this might be fine for this round, but keeping in mind, once we have that design locked in, presumably, if we have the north-south line come at some point, we're going to use the same station design. And so I think it's really important to be mindful of cost control for the stations, making sure that the process lends itself to that.
Yeah, I entirely agree that the cost control is very important. What I think this process gives us in terms of benefits, one, it allows us to give the community, frankly, a way to participate in the design process that's more fun. You know, rather than just parking's going to be removed from here or there, it gives people an opportunity to really participate in what it's going to look like. And I think because of that, it gives us an opportunity to make it more uniquely Madison. You know, I think we can, we could use AECOM to just design us a station and we could bring that design public and get comments and tweak it however. But I think that it's going to have less kind of grassroots support, I think. And I know that Madison did use a process similar to this for the State Street Bus Shelters that was 15 to 20 years ago, I believe. And by all accounts that I've talked to, that went fairly well. I use this in Indianapolis, this process as well, and it, I was very happy with the result. I think it got a lot of media attention in a way that brought a lot more people into the fold and a lot more people interested in the project that maybe, when you just say it's going to be dedicated lanes, it's going to be this or that, that maybe didn't get as interested. And they actually could see it and saw what it was going to be that really brought them in. So for all those reasons, I think, I think it's a good way to go. But you're right, there is some risk that the final design selection is maybe not the most cost-effective. And so that's where I think it was important that we stressed that these are design concepts. These are not fully fleshed designs. And so we have some flexibility to take that concept and maybe kind of value engineer it into a package that still meets the general, the original intent, but maybe is easier to construct or uses less expensive materials or whatever we need to get it to fit within our budget.
Thank you.
Thanks, Harald. Additional questions for Justin? Seeing none, we'll go on to our next Metro Network Transit, I'm sorry, Metro Transit Network redesign.
And that's me as well. So those of you on the TPPB know that we did a series of meetings earlier this month with Jared Walker. We had a meeting with the TPPB. We also had a public meeting as well as a stakeholder meeting. It was a chance to dig into a little bit more detail with a subset of folks. I think overall participation in those meetings was strong. I think we had, in the network, in the public meeting, we had over 150 people at one point, which was great to see. And we, I think, got a lot of good, a lot of good questions that we were able to answer and give us some guidance. In those meetings, we presented some kind of informal surveys. Since that time, actually, just recently, we released a more formal survey to the general population that is inviting people to weigh in on what the system should be in terms of how much shift to ridership versus coverage there should be. We also just released the full text of the existing conditions report, which we previewed with the TPPB, the executive summary. But now that full text is available on our website as well, for those of you who are interested in kind of digging into more of those details. Next steps, we are based on the feedback in those meetings and in the survey. Our plan is to create a few, a few sample system maps. These would not intended to be what the final version will be, but instead intended to highlight some of the trade-offs that might exist between a high ridership versus a high-coverage network. So we'll be working with, between staff and the consultant to develop one very high ridership map that maybe leaves a lot of coverage out and another very high-coverage map that maybe doesn't have high frequencies in the core. Again, we don't anticipate either to be the final solution, but what we're trying to do is kind of create those bookends so that the public and these bodies can decide, you know, where in that spectrum between those bookends should we fall. And it's, at that, it's a little easier to do so once you have, once you have some, something to actually look at and compare and contrast against. And then ultimately, we plan to do those, to review those this summer across all parties. And that's all I have for that one.
Thanks, Justin. Alder Foster, go ahead.
Thank you. I'm not sure if I missed it or if the survey hasn't been shared very widely yet, but I would definitely recommend getting it out, you know, at least to all Alders for them to share out. I think doing it as a, like, press release would be worthwhile. I've got a pretty broad audience and I know we've gotten a number of other, like, even I think it probably would be worthwhile to send out to the Neighborhood Association email lists and the other organizational contacts that we have, like Century Spawn or everything, all that sort of stuff. So maybe some of those have happened, but I haven't really seen it anywhere yet. So it would be great to really get it pushed out, I think. I think it may have just got out in the last day or so, so they may still be working to do that, but I will make sure it happens. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder Foster. Ian, go ahead.
Yeah, Justin, I'm not sure if I'm caught up on all my emails because I've had a number of things going on the past couple of days, but I don't think I saw that survey either. So could we at least make sure that it goes to the members of both these bodies too? Thanks.
Thank you, Ian. Any further questions on this transit or Metro Network Transit, Metro Transit Network redesign? All right, and I believe parking is up next.
All right, good evening. I'll pull up my presentation here quick. All right, hopefully you're all seeing that. All right. So just have a couple of updates. Wanted to start with, I know we've, I've given some presentations recently with a quarterly update on park utility finances and revenues and expenses, but wanted to talk a little bit about kind of high-level overview of cash flows and projections and what, you know, that means for reserve fund balance. And I guess I'll start with noting that in terms of revenues, looking forward for this year and through 2025, the projection shown should be taken with a grain of salt. There's still a lot of unknown as to what recovery will, you know, really look like this year and in the coming years. How much remote working will continue and how that parking demand will have an impact on ours. So for 2021, we're showing 7 million. And just in terms of, you know, that projection where we're at now, current revenues year-to-date, and it's not quite the end of March, but those are at 886,000. So if we essentially just broke that down to a monthly rate and applied that across the year, that would be annual revenues of 3.5 million for this year, which is significantly obviously below what we're projecting. And we are expecting some recovery to occur through summer and through the end of the year. I think as the vaccine gets rolled out and more widely available. But just one thing to keep in mind, it is relatively unknown how, how things will play out and how quickly people might return to some of their previous patterns and returning to offices. So just kind of an overview here of 2019. We've got the, so operating revenues, this would be what a typical pre-COVID year looked like. So 16.7 million in operating revenues. Those are all parking user fees, so hourly parking for both garages and lots, metered parking on-street, and then permit parking, mostly the monthly parking, and about 200,000 in the RP3 permits. Moving down here, these are our primary expense categories. The parking division operational expenses, these are expenses that directly relate to parking division staff and all of our operating activities for maintenance, purchase services and supplies. So these are directly tied to our activities. Those were 8.8 million in 2019. Payment in lieu of taxes, and then we also paid 10% of gross on-street metered revenues to the general fund. So that was 1.5 million in 2019. That's typically a relatively stable payment as well to the general fund. Allocations and interdepartmental charges, these are payments to the general fund for central service agencies like human resources, finance, city attorney's office, and others that provide services to our agency as well as other agencies in the city. So some of those costs are allocated directly to enterprise agencies. So that was about 700,000 in 2019. And then parking enforcement expenses, those are salaries, a portion of the towing contract. And at that time, I don't believe any of the software and license fees were included in 2019. And those expenses reflected there, the 1.1 million were for parking enforcement officers that did RP3 enforcement as well as on-street meter. So it did not include other parking enforcement-related activities in our budget at that time. So as you're looking through 2020 and 2021, those projections, that's where you're seeing the changes, those additional costs for, for staff and license and towing fees. So in 2019, we had net revenues of about 4.6 million. So that's what we generated in reserve fund balances. And in parking reserves, we used to fund all of our capital projects. And the Lake Street parking ramp, for instance, that's slated for replacement. Those dollars were intended at the time to be able to fund that replacement within the next couple of years. Looking at 2020, and again, this number is probably actually a little higher in terms of net deficit. These were not year-end final numbers, but about a million last year, and we did have about three months of full revenues. And then the $5 million sale of the podium, which helped offset those losses. So that's why you're seeing really just a small deficit. We're including that 5 million one-time payment. So then looking to 2021, we expect to use about 7.4 million in reserves this year. Again, it could be significantly higher or lower than that number. And, you know, I think we'll know more and have better projections in the coming months. But that puts us at about 10.3 million in fund balance. And expecting continued losses and deficits likely through 2023, where we start to break even and generate some, some additional revenue in reserves. And so again, numerous factors can change. This is based on kind of our current expectations, existing expenses, et cetera. In terms of, so some changes as well in terms of measures to reduce expenses. We did decide to extend our participation in WorkShare. So we're submitting an application that would be from April 4th through September 5th. And we've got about 55% of our staff who would be participating in that at about either 10% or 20%. The average of all staff is 16% participation. So that's 33, or excuse me, 39 employees that would be included in WorkShare. We don't have the approval yet, but we do expect that that would be approved and the folks are eligible to continue for that timeframe. Just another update in terms of revenues, we're keeping an eye to see whether the latest rate increase, there was the phased approach for the parking recovery plan. We had significantly reduced rates in June of last year and have been incrementally increasing those back to the standard adopted rates. On March 15th, the rates went mostly back to normal. So for commuters and, which is our primary revenue, is that daytime weekday is back to standard rates. The evening and weekend maximum is typically an $8 maximum fee that is a little bit lower at $5. So other than that reduction for that particular rate, all other fees for on-street metered parking and off-street facilities are back to the standard rates. So an update on Wilson Street Garage and the sprinkler malfunction. We did open the garage back up March 16th. Fortunately, there was not significant damage to elevators or other major repair expenses. Some of the contributing factors were the duration of the sprinkler discharge combined with the extreme cold temperatures. I believe it was close to two hours that the sprinkler was, was running before the water was turned off. It went off around, I think, 5:00 AM, was shut off shortly before 7:00 AM. Combined with the freezing temperatures in the garage resulted in, or the drains freezing and improper drainage. So water flowing where we did not want it to flow, damaging some of the equipment, electronic equipment for the fire system as well as going into the elevator shafts. So we have done a number of inspections, evaluations to determine both the cause and future prevention and mitigation strategies. One was an inspection of all sprinkler heads and replacement of damaged. I believe there were 19 sprinkler heads identified that do need to be replaced from, from damage. It's possible that those may have been damaged during installation. So that, how that damage occurred is a little bit uncertain. Many of them were in high locations that wouldn't be impacted by clearance issues. And that, you know, could have been the potential cause of the one sprinkler that did go off. There were also some missing drum drips that were installed that could have contributed to the cause of, of that discharge. Additionally, in terms of mitigation, looking at waterproofing measures for some of the equipment in case of future, you know, water during wash downs or in, in future sprinkler discharge, we do expect it's, it's something that's going to happen in a parking garage. You get tall vehicles that, that hit sprinklers and don't meet the clearance requirement. So we don't expect that this one sprinkler is a one-time issue, and we can expect that it's, it's going to happen in the future. And so just addressing the, the factors that led to the closure and some of the repair needs is what we're trying to prevent with some of these additional steps. The ventilation system as well, we're looking at whether additional control sequences can be added to reduce the amount of time that the fans essentially are running and pulling in outside air. So that could help just improve efficiency year-round to only have that running when, when necessary and just to meet the, you know, the minimum code requirements and not have it running in excess. That'll also help reduce the cold air being drawn in during those extreme weather days. And last, the, there's training that's been expanded on the sprinkler system. So most of our field staffs, including lead workers, customer service ambassadors, others who would potentially be in the field and be able to respond quickly. We want as many staff trained as possible that are able to turn off the water and take other steps necessary if there is a discharge for, for some reason to, to reduce any freezing of pipes. So the response time is really critical, especially during freezing temperatures. Summer months, we wouldn't expect, or warmer temperatures, wouldn't expect too many problems because we would anticipate drainage would, would not be an issue. So, so really focusing on different steps and training to, to ensure that we're able to address an incident during very cold temperatures in the future. A couple of updates on the meter replacement project. We've been working on this for a couple of years. We'd started with a pilot and initially replaced all of the coin-only meters that were on the street. That was completed in 2019, and we've been working to convert our aging multi-space system and replace those with these new single-space smart meters. So these accept Visa, MasterCard, Coin. They, they look a lot like a traditional meter where you pay at each individual space rather than having to go to a central kiosk or pay station to make your payment. So it's pretty intuitive, user-friendly for, for customers. And we've been continuing to expand that on a block-by-block basis throughout 2020. And this should be completed along with a couple of new IPS meter pay stations for off-street facilities by summer of this year. And with those new meters, we've been working on the Pay by Cell application and replacing our old system that, the Mobile Now that went out of business from the pandemic earlier last year. So we've been without a mobile payment system for our meters since, I think, March or April of last year. We went live with this on March 15th. The couple of benefits to this as well is it's a pay-as-you-go, so folks can just enter their credit card number that they want to use for payments. It's not a wallet system. I know there were concerns after Mobile Now went out of business with customers that did have some, some wallet balances in their account. So this would, you know, eliminate any risk to the customer in that sense. There's also no convenience fee for customers. It's offered for free, so they're just paying for their time at their space. And in terms of how it works with our system, it's basically just like processing any other credit card payment at the machine. So it's pretty seamless. We've also been able to get the coin-only meters in place for our motorcycle spaces off-street. Those spaces typically don't generate adequate revenue to make it cost-effective for us to put in the smart meters. So we do have just the old coin-only meters in place, but folks will now have that option to not have to carry coin if they're parking at those and can use the mobile app as well. And the, the software for this cell phone application is also integrated with parking enforcement software system, which is AIM. So they're able to, to enforce all of those with their handheld system and not have to use separate systems to look up mobile pay, payments. Another benefit with this is with customers that use the mobile app, the payment won't show. It's not going to push out to the meter, although that is an option. The reason we're not doing that is it does have impacts on battery life where it's, essentially the meters are constantly checking for, for a payment and can negatively, you know, impact the battery life. So it also provides a benefit in terms of customers not being able to piggyback or necessarily drive around looking for a space with time on it. So each person, you know, pays for their own space and would not be aware of whether there was remaining payment from a prior parker who would use the Pay by Cell app. And last, just a quick update on the committee process for the parking enforcement transfer, the proposed transfer from the Police Department to Parking Division. This went to the Transportation Commission and Public Safety Review Committee on March 10th. Finance Committee acted on this on Monday, and then on next Tuesday, March 30th, that returns to the Council for a final decision on that. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Questions for Sabrina? Seeing none. Questions for any staff members before we move on, for any of the items? This last call for them. All right, thank you, everyone, for your presentations. Then our next item is, let's see here. Just our 64726, the 2022 Transportation Budget Preview.
Thanks. Do you mind if I?
Thanks. Do you mind if I?
Go ahead.
My screen? We, here we go. So I'm going to go ahead and do the presentation, and sometimes slides don't advance. There, can everyone? Let me, slides don't advance. Okay, so these are 2022 budget considerations. You might call it a foreshadowing. I'm going to focus most of the time on capital projects. We will start with the Transportation Capital Budget, which is where the BRT project is housed. Can everyone see it saying BRT there?
Tom, you're in present review, just so you know.
Okay, so you don't actually, so if that's the case, then why don't I see if I can? Is that better or no?
Yes.
Okay. Thanks. You know, by the time I figure this all out, we'll be done with Zoom meetings and we'll be back to in person, right? So I'm going to say probably the 2022 capital budget is probably the most important transportation capital budget that we've had in decades. It's where we need to appropriate the funding for BRT or the FTA to come into a small starts agreement with us. We have to show that we've committed our local sources. Here you can see how it shows is allocated in the SIP. It's a little bit confusing because the 2020 budget only allocated $4 million towards BRT, but we had to do a mid-year adjustment of an additional $3 million to show FTA that how we had the funds needed to move through project development. If you take everything that's been spent from the Phase 2 BRT contract, what's been appropriated and what we have planned for 2022, the total amounts is $160 million. The budget that was allocated towards the BRT project is broken up into these four categories. This is what we used when we submitted our project to be evaluated by the FTA. About $53 million for vehicles, about $50 million for roadway stations, about $34 million, and then a maintenance facility, about $24 million. Since that time, August, there's been a considerable number of changes that will affect this budget, you know, the elimination of Rose Road. We've added a bicycle path on the north side of Interpoint Road. We're anticipating some added roadway construction costs, particularly on East Washington Avenue and then perhaps on Campus Drive. The movement from side-running stations to center-running stations probably will reduce our station costs from seven to 10 million. The fact that we were able to obtain the FedEx facility probably will reduce the amount we need for our maintenance facility by, you know, up to 18 million. We are planning on using the Brayton Lot for staging. We've talked about that there could be several advantages to doing that from a cost perspective on the city's part. It's likely that we will need additional charging equipment. Right now, we are looking at, instead of having a West Terminal and a High Point, we are thinking of pushing it to the west onto Junction Road. There are several advantages to that. It allows us to, you know, get on the other side of the Beltline, which is always good, but we also have some city-owned land there and allows us to have a park-and-ride, but that will add to cost. In Justin's service plan for the BRT, the three quarters of the of the buses are electric, one quarter are diesel. If we wanted to move from diesel to hybrid diesel, that would add about $5 million. And then there's some Sun Prairie Terminal and buses associated with that. So you can see that while, you know, what we have budgeted from last August and the changes that have occurred since then, there's quite a few. Right now, the consultant is working on revising and updating the estimate by June. That will be based on about a 10% evaluation of the BRT system. Then perhaps we might be able to get another 30% estimate, perhaps in August or September. It's anticipated that the total project cost will remain $160 million. And we will basically adjust our scope so that we kind of fit there. It is possible that Madison's local share could be reduced slightly. This is mostly due to maybe some of the innovative ways. We could use some existing city assets like the Brayton Lot as Justin helped us identify for project costs that are already, you know, assets of Madison and don't require a budget appropriation. Traffic engineering, this is what was included in the 2021 SIP. We are not anticipating large changes to that. There is a chance that the 20 is plenty. If we would put that in the budget, could add a half million. We are looking to see if there's ways that we could get some federal funding with all the talk of federal funding that's going around right now to help with some Vision Zero initiatives. With parking, we're not anticipating large changes from the SIP from what was previously stated, with the exception of the intercity bus terminal and Lake Street Ramp. In the previous years, so Lake Street Ramp was in the SIP for, I believe, the year 2025. Last year, with just the status of parking general fund and the way things are, it was moved to the Horizon list. Right now, the, you know, the DOT and really economic development is releasing an RFP soon to see if there could be a joint project between the intercity bus terminal and Lake Street Garage Replacement. If we get information from that RFP soon enough, we will submit it within the capital budget requests. It probably won't be able to be submitted in the original request, but perhaps we might be able to make an adjustment in July or something to that effect. Metro Transit is not anticipating any large changes from the SIP. And that's not because, how do I say it? It's not because not that large things aren't happening in Metro Transit. Clearly, large things are happening in Metro Transit. It's just that a lot of the costs have been already appropriated. That includes like the monies that were being used for the FedEx facility as well as the transit technology system. Those were really kind of encumbered in both 2020 and 2021. The other remaining things are the has to do with facility repairs, so the 1101 facility in 2022. Some operating considerations, we we have not begun to think a lot about operating costs. I know that next week, I believe I have my meeting with Finance to understand the cost to continue cost for Transportation Office, and I suspect that the Division leaders also have that. The one thing, though, that we are considering or has been brought to our attention is the Transportation Demand Management Program that we hope to bring before committees and perhaps the Council this year. Talking with Matt Tucker of zoning and Heather Souter, planning, I think they've made it clear that the the number of, you know, permits and development properties that it would apply to could be in the hundreds, and it would be unlikely that we could kind of administer that TDM program and review, you know, applications with existing staff. So we may request that we're a new TDM administrator. We are looking at a cost structure for fees so that it would be self-funding eventually, but probably in the initial year or so, it may not be self-funding. And then we're also exploring the possibility of a Transportation Management Association grant, which would be to support a private entity to assist developments needing TDM help. I think what we're finding is that as people come to the Plan Commission for Development Approval, they might have a transportation demand management plan. However, oftentimes their transportation demand management coordinator ends up being perhaps an office manager or someone with multiple responsibilities and who isn't really familiar with, you know, what transportation demand management is, might not have the same type of advocacy mindset. And so I think I've been impressed with just what Free Wheel is. Free Wheel is doing right here with the Wilson Street Garage and how they've partnered with the city to provide a bicycle center. And we're wondering if perhaps we could use a grant program to get another entrepreneur, let's say, up and running that could really assist some of these larger developments to get serious and advocating for alternate roads, alternate modes, not alternate roads. So those are just ideas right now and the very basic concepts.
Thank you, Tom. Any questions? Okay, seeing none. Next item is Legisstar 64727, action items from this joint TCTPV meeting. Anne, go ahead.
Yeah, it seems to me that we're just continuing to work on those action items that we brought forward from the September 30 meeting. And, you know, adding in complete green streets and the prioritization of the Capitol Streets projects that I think are are very closely related. So I guess I just recommend that we continue on working on the same action items because we still have a lot of work to do on those action items, and it doesn't seem productive to add more action items if we don't have any capacity to act on them.
Thank you, Anne. I agree. Any comments? Other members of either the Board or the Commission? Right, seeing none, we'll continue to track those and of course, our various subgroups as well. All right, the final item of the evening is Legisstar 64728, timing of the next joint TCTPV meeting and future agenda items for the next joint meeting. Faults in the timing for our next joint meeting, certainly, Cherkovich and I will be, you know, can discuss it with staff as things come up and as time goes on. I feel like some of the items that we've covered tonight are sort of recurring. You know, the brief updates that we got on various items, some more ongoing major major policy items or and programs that we that are relevant to both bodies. You know, we'll stay on as agenda items, but a few hands up here, so Anne, go ahead.
Yeah, I'm wondering if, you know, I think we're trying to be really efficient in how we work on things, and if we try and use our existing TC and TPPB meetings and invite members from the other body to attend and potentially participate, we could, you know, stay on track and not interrupt our our regular work by by doing so. And then, you know, just as you said, Tom, see if we if we do have some items where coming together and focusing on those items for a particular meeting would make sense. We could do it, but it seems to me that might be a way to to be efficient.
Thank you, Anne. Alder Kimble, go ahead.
Yeah, I like that idea. If we're intentional about reading each other's agendas, or maybe Tom and Anne can just read each other's agendas and highlight for the respective bodies what items might be of interest to the to the other one. But I do think it would be good for us to meet after after the budget requests have been made in June, maybe. That is, if we're on the same budget timeline as we have been. What do you think about that, Tom Lynch?
Yeah, that would be great. In fact, I I just put the those dates into my calendar today. We, our capital requests are due Tuesday, May 25.
And the operating?
The operating is due June. Put it down as June 9. I'm wondering if that's July 9. Let me, do you mind if I just, I'll check on this, you can continue. Oh, here it is.
The idea would just be for us to meet jointly on maybe that one item, unless there's something going on with the other studies. We're at a at a point where it makes sense to do an update on all the other, on any of the other initiatives. But I think it would be good for us to really go through the budget requests with with a fine tooth comb.
Looking at our cap, oh, go ahead, sorry.
With the with the intention of seeing what we might need to do to to support the work of the Transportation Department.
Thank you, Alder Kimble. Go ahead, Tom.
Yeah, I apologize. I, this is good because I put it in my calendar wrong. It's July 9th and our operating budgets are due, not June 9.
All right, so it looks like, I was just looking at the TPPB calendar. The TPPB has a scheduled meeting on July 19. I think the TC gave up a meeting for us to meet today. Perhaps it would be appropriate for the TPPB to give up one of its meetings, if we want to do that. So July 19 is the one that we have scheduled. Let me jump back there quick. I think, okay, yeah, we have one on the June 28 and then July 19. Perhaps there's an opportunity to add an extra one in there if we want to do so. But Margaret, go ahead.
Yeah, for July dates, we always might want to poll to make sure that, you know, as people, summer plans become clearer, whether they'll be available to meet. But I definitely endorse the idea of coming back together shortly there, shortly after the budget proposals have been made. And also, I think that that meshes with the timing on, may mesh with the timing on the BRT. I'm particularly interested in those cost estimates for extending Sun Prairie and also extending West past Belt Line as those are pretty significant changes. Well, and there's just a lot in flux with that proposal. So we'll be all in favor of a joint meeting specifically for those two items.
Thank you, Margaret. Perhaps it might be appropriate, if we do use the July 19 date, which is already scheduled for TPPB, the TPPB may may desire to meet an hour early to go over some the TPPB may may desire to meet an hour early um to go over some items maybe unique to the board, and then we could do a joint meeting. I think we've done it that way in the in the in the past. Um, I did see a hand up, but it looks like it's down now. Um, all right, well, um, do you uh working with, um, I'll work with Anne on that and with staff. Anne Kovac, go ahead.
Yeah, I just want to mention that I believe staff is sending um each other body's agenda to, so the TC is getting the Policy Board agenda, and I think the members of the Policy Board are getting the TC agenda. Um, and Patrick, I believe that's the case. So um, you know, that's, and and I think you're right, Tom. I think we should, and Rebecca, I think we should review them carefully and make sure we highlight for people, oh, pay attention, this is coming. So you might want to attend. Uh, but I think we've just recently taken that extra step so that everybody on each group is getting the agenda. So we can make sure everybody's up to speed on that. And that's right, isn't it, Patrick? Yeah. So I think that'll help, Tom, but I think you're right. We need to stay in good touch and make sure we highlight those topics for the group.
All right, so perhaps we'll we'll just tentatively put in July 19th. Um, I hesitate in on the spot to to throw out other dates without looking at uh the calendars for other BCCs and and for the council session. Um, okay, um, that's all we have for the evening. Are there any further comments or questions? If not, um, I believe we will adjourn one at a time. So I'd be looking for motions to adjourn the TPPB meeting. Alder Furman?
Motion to adjourn.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thinking of Alder Campbell. All those in favor of the TPPB adjourning uh its portion of the meeting, please unmute yourselves and say aye.
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 Opposed, no? Surely it's unanimous, we're adjourned. Cherkovich?
Yes, do we have a motion to adjourn the Transportation Commission meeting? Harold, we have a motion. Do we have a second? Bill, we have a second. If you'd unmute yourselves, then everybody who's in favor of adjournment, please say aye.
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 Anybody opposed? Okay, we're adjourned. Thanks, everybody.